...items as they are being considered by the school board, please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your question or idea. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda item being considered. Can I have the roll call, please?
President.
Here.
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 And for the record, Mrs. McKinney and Mrs. Jepson are excused for this evening. All right. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda without item P as there has been a late development in the grant timeline.
That motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right. All right, we're moving on to item two, the presentations. First item A is the student staff community recognition. Dr. Aslan? All right, first up, could I have Jasmine Wilson come forward, please, with Mr. Scherz? Jasmine has stepped up and been a very active member of the student council. While their advisor was away, she has proposed multiple ideas to building administration and has let her peers in different activities to celebrate each other and their multiple successes. Could we all give Jasmine Wilson a hand, please? All right. Next up, could we have Hugh Miller, Justin Mayberry, and Steve Fulton? And Missy Geisregan, please.
Without Hugh, Steve, and Justin, we would not have been able to deliver the incredible hybrid model that we did. Our tech guys worked around the clock to support student and teacher IT needs. They have been fundamental in leveraging a range of creative approaches to expand learning resources and instructional support. They have made video resources available to guide families in their use of digital tools, how-to tips for teachers, along with support for accessing various online editions. Not only did they help us find the right tools for hybrid teaching and learning, but they also were setting up sound, live streaming meetings, concert, and fixing Chromebooks. Give them a round of applause, too, please. Thank you.
All right. And next up, Cassie Byer, Monique Vosberg, Amanda Sunderland, and Julie Soholt. And Mr. Hopkey.
All right. Cassie, Monique, Stephanie, and Julie are special education paraprofessionals at Spooner Elementary School. These paraprofessionals have been a model for teamwork in the elementary building. They have been very flexible when they are staffing. There are staffing concerns and are always willing to step up to meet the needs of most challenging students. They always have a positive and can-do attitude. Their dedication to the students at SES is very apparent, and these students have demonstrated great gains academically and socially. Can you give these four wonderful ladies a round of applause, please?
This is another great example of the fine staff we have here at Spooner High School, or Spooner School District. Next item is update from District Nurse Sarah Hamilton. We received information regarding COVID numbers. Are there any questions? Well, you probably... No, she is B. Does anyone have any questions for Sarah? No, I think we're good, but I just want to say thank you for everything you've done the entire year to make this extremely difficult year a little more bearable. So, we appreciate everything you've done. So, if you could, if everybody could give Sarah a round of applause. All right. And we are going to receive and place that information on file. Okay, item C is the referendum project update. Brad Kunkel? Good evening, Brad.
I'd like to provide a quick update. Starting with the website update, we're looking at getting an updated description of the project as well as renderings that we have of some of the new construction. And then, lastly, looking at getting some drone footage on there. We'll be taking that drone footage once every two weeks, just to kind of show the progress. Then, once the projects are complete next August, we'll look at combining that footage, and that can be the district's property at that time, to just show kind of a time lapse of the project. In addition to coming here monthly, we'll also be providing construction update reports that will include some photos, descriptions of the project, where things are sitting, just something for the board and community staff members to review as well. We've largely finalized the schedule. With that being said, lead times are just kind of all over the place right now. We're in a bit of a unique situation. We have been able to really minimize cost changes, but some of that schedule has fluctuated slightly. With that being said, substantial completion is not affected whatsoever at this point. But just want to let you know, I'm sure you've heard a lot about the cost changes. We're letting people store things on-site, not letting them store at their warehouses. Just trying to keep up with that the best we can. So, job trailers, some equipment, and some materials are at both the elementary school and middle schools of now. It's going to really start ramping up this week and much more so next week. Starting this Wednesday, we're going to start doing some abatement prep at the small gym at the middle school. No abatement will take place while school is in session, but that will be the first work that really starts this June. CISA, we're going to be on-site full-time starting Wednesday as well, just making sure any work that's taking place on-site that we're here to oversee that. And then, once abatement takes place as well, we do have supervisors that can go in the containments, make sure, you know, all the proper methods are being utilized. Others, we're looking at mainly mobilizing next week. I would say that's going to be close to a third of those we have under contract, just a lot of the trades that we need to get on-site right away. Groundbreaking's going to be June 21st at 5:30 at the elementary school, so just a heads-up, I'm sure you guys are aware, but just want to be sure. Okay, our last couple items is lead testing. We had that conducted a couple of months ago, received those reports. No elevated lead for any items to be disturbed within the district. Lastly, folks on energy, we did receive, I believe, about $10,000 to $12,000 with last summer's projects. Looking at receiving much more of this go-through, we've met with folks on energy reps, mainly working on the work that's going to take place prior to December 31st. They work on a fiscal calendar of July to December, and so we'll get that first round, you know, early spring 2022, and then look at probably late fall 2022 for the remaining folks on energy incentives. That's really all I have. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll receive and place that information on file. All right. Moving on to item D, discuss the operation level for summer. Dr. Aslan?
So, as we transition out of the regular school year into the summer months, as we've done throughout this school year, when there's a change in the section of the school calendar, we reevaluate the level. And, boy, for the first time in some time, we bring forward a recommendation of downgrading the attendance level from the level two that we've been at for a year now, down to level one for the summer months. And just within that, students attend school in person, and that'll be the summer school experience that we have, and on the front end of the summer, and then the tail end. We continue to focus on social distancing and those universal hygiene procedures. Big change is while PPE is authorized to wear, and it's provided, that's kind of where that piece of it ends. We continue some of our practices, like parents dropping off at front entrances, students in assigned seats on bus. And I want to be really clear with this. The bus transporting members of the public falls under different rules and regulations and guidance than attending school does. So, while we won't see as much PPE wear in school, that continues to be a requirement on the bus until those rules are changed. So, two separate sets of rules governing PPE wear in those two different experiences. Another change is limited visitors to school. And probably one way that we see some significant impact there is the district would begin to take facility use requests again. And with that, any group that was granted a facility use authorization would bear responsibility for social distancing and hygiene during their event, and also any contact tracing that should be required on the back end. The district's piece would be to give a clean and hygienic facility to the group as they came in, and then clean it as they leave. So, you know, those are some of the key differences. And again, the recommendation will be that we move to level one of the Rails reopening plan through August of 2021. Questions of me?
Are there any questions? Okay. Do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Dr. Aslan. And item E is discuss the WIA, Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association, annual renewal. Dr. Aslan?
So, again, an annual renewal, and you've all been on the board through these before. As you'll see, the WIA has continued their recent practice of not collecting dues or fees. So, this is a function that you do every year at this time, and the recommendation would be to approve this membership.
Could I ask a question? I went through the list here, and the one just shows, I saw where hockey says "non-contact co-op." What determines a non-contact co-op versus a contact co-op?
That's a great question, and I don't have an answer for you. Mr. Scherz, do you have any idea on that one? Okay. Well, Mr. Johnson, I'll find the answer to that question and follow up with you on that.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? Okay, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. All right. All right, we're moving on to item F, discuss the Badger Bus Contract. Dr. Aslan?
Okay, so, and we do have Gary Judy, Gary and Judy Cusky here with us this evening, and they can field questions that you may have, but Badger Bus has brought forward a couple of things. One is a 5% change in the contract for next year. And as you know, that contract provides for an annual adjustment. And, you know, I just want you to know that from the district's perspective financially, that's built into our budget for next year already. So, that should be fairly straightforward for you. The other piece is they are requesting an extension of the contract through June 30th of 2026. And lastly, in our conversations with the Cuskys from the district side, we've asked that the routing software that the district acquired a year ago, that that go into the contract, that that's something that'll be used. So, so we've broken this down into some separate actions. The administrative recommendation is that you approve the 5% increase and that you grant the contract extension to include the district's piece of it with the routing software. And with that, I guess we would open up to questions.
Are there any questions? Okay.
That routing software, can you just explain that a little bit, what that is?
So, it's to automate routing. So, each of the routes is loaded into the Traversa software. What it allows us to do, why we brought it in, was in the event that we had, you know, significant quarantines, maybe areas that were quarantined, we can redo, we can reconfigure the bus routes quickly.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Okay. Then, with that said, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. All right. So, now we're moving on to item G, discuss the school perception survey results. And you're up again.
Yes. So, the annual staff engagement survey was conducted shortly after spring break, and those results are back. Just a little bit of background, because we know that the Spooner School District has been a longtime customer of School Perceptions and had the staff engagement survey. So, one piece is you look at the material that you've been provided, is kind of their red and green measures that they use, and just know that it's a red or a green, it's more than a standard deviation off the average. Red, a standard deviation below the average; green, a standard deviation above. And if I was going to characterize these survey results, I'd say they're lower scores than they've been in the last couple of years. And I reached out to the owner of School Perceptions, Bill Foster, just to have a different understanding, and I'll just share some of the insights that he gave on the data. And that is, you know, obviously, from a data standpoint, COVID this year has been markedly impacted by COVID, not just in Spooner, but in schools across the country. And so, that, you know, that certainly has been a new challenge. In looking at our results, you know, we have had a dip in some areas, and Bill says that we're coming off of a pretty high baseline the past couple of years. Numbers are still solid, but they have changed. So, I guess here's the biggest takeaway that I'd share with you this evening. He says the key for the district is to separate issues and concerns from this year from those that are issues that are going forward, that need to be addressed in greater depth and more conversation. So, his recommendation is that the district would look to host some small focus groups to better understand that feedback.
Are there any questions regarding the staff survey?
Just a comment.
Okay.
In a couple of sections for the high school, the difference column actually doesn't show the difference between under student achievement and engagement, reporting.
Yes, I think we knew that that was missing in that part of the survey.
That's a piece we can follow up on and find more.
I think what I got from it, when I read it, is that I'm very pleased in some of those areas that, in the green, that really shot up, and in particular, when it comes to student discipline, how they feel student discipline, how they feel their administrators are communicating with them. Some of them that are the real red, I think, are reflections of the board. A lot of those were the board questions, and I think a lot of those, we as a board have trouble struggling with this year itself. So, what they see here and what they pick up outside, I can understand what they're seeing there, but it was, a lot of it, as you said, was because of COVID. And some of those answers, we, as far as even a couple of the questions, you know, how well the board was honest in communicating, we didn't have an answer to communicate with. We were really unaware, and it was really a week-to-week or day-to-day operation. But I was real pleased to see that when it came down to, you know, our teaching our students and working with the administrators and behavioral issues, and, you know, having students with special needs, are they being dressed properly? We all increased in all those areas. So, I'm proud of that, and I guess as far as, like I said, the other ones are, a lot of those were board, they're reflections of us, and it has nothing to do with, maybe, it does have something to do with teaching students, but it doesn't directly affect the students. It affects the upper levels.
Right. Right. And I think part of that is, you're right, I think part of that is the fact that we didn't have definitive answers for the community, or the parents, or even sometimes the staff.
And even when we did have answers, we didn't know if we were getting accurate information then.
Right.
We were having, our discussions were whether or not we're even dealing with accurate information. So, it was difficult for us as a board this year.
Yes.
Dr. Aslan, with those focus groups, did, I mean, when would those start? Would that look at the beginning of the next school year?
That's correct. Those would be an activity that we'd look to conduct in the fall.
And did perceptions, did they give us some ideas about what kind of questions to ask and kind of pointed those with those results?
They didn't in this communication, but they offered to help in the future. So, that's certainly some insights that they could share with us.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments?
Echo the, I'm pleased with the good jump in the building level. Feedback there, consistency. And just, I think that's something for us as a board to reflect.
Absolutely.
Communication.
Yep. We want to make sure that, once we receive this information, that we actually build towards doing a better job at those different things that we, or that the staff feels that aren't quite adequate. So, I think there's always room for learning everywhere. So, all right. So, are there any other questions or comments? All right. Then, we would like to receive and place this information on file as well. All right. We're moving on to item H, discuss the social studies curriculum. Dr. Aslan?
So, we, this year, we've continued our multi-year ongoing work of putting written curriculum in place, and as per our plan, this was the year for social studies. So, this is a body of work that's taken place during the current school year. COVID certainly did have a marked impact on this, where we were able to work in larger groups that were cross-sections of the grade levels. That wasn't possible this year. So, grade level teams work collaboratively to review the DPI social study standards. This will also be the first curriculum brought forward to you that wasn't based on a common core platform. In this process, teams, after reviewing the standards, identified the priority standards. Those are the most critical standards that they've identified for students to be successful with that learning. After identifying the priority standards, they unpacked those standards, and we had some help with CISA 11 with that. And that's really important, because the unpacking process identifies those learning targets. And that's the piece where we really distill the learning down to the most critical piece, and that's communicated to students. So, some key features of what you've received are, they include standards from each of the social study strands, and that's the behavioral science, economics, geography, history, and political sciences, as well as an overarching piece of inquiry. It uses the same format that we've used for our work in math and English language arts, where we've identified outcomes of those key concepts, and then benchmarks, the pieces that we assess to. And we know through our work with professional learning communities that that assessment piece, both formative and somatic, is absolutely critical to good learning. Answers the question, what do we expect our students to know and do? And I think you'll see in there, at all grade levels and in every high school course, teachers have done an excellent job identifying and being able to communicate with any stakeholder group what we expect our students to know and do. And it supports student learning, investigating questions in a deeper and engaging manner, and it provides opportunities for both individual and collaborative work on important questions within that social studies discipline. So, moving forward, the benchmarks will be what the majority of instructional time is spent on in social studies, what's assessed, what building teams will have data-driven discussions about, and what interventions will be based on. As you recall from last month, we talked about allocating some ESER money this coming school year for resources for social studies district-wide, and that's a process that we'll continue to go forward with later in the school year. And we're seeking school board adoption of this curriculum in order to implement for the '21-'22 school year. Questions of me?
Are there any questions regarding the social studies curriculum? Okay. All right. If there are no questions, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting? And is that correct?
For adoption.
For adoption. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then, we're moving on to item I, discuss the appointment of the records custodian.
So, Mrs. Grindell's departure left the district in a position where it doesn't currently have someone on appointment for the custodian of records. And an example of what that position functions as, when someone makes a public information request, it goes to the custodian of records to provide that information. So, the administrative recommendation is that we move, that you give Caitlin that extra duty assignment.
Are there any additional questions? Okay. If not, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Okay. So, item J is discuss the student handbook updates. Okay. So, you want to take part of this, or do you want me to?
You know, where we left it last time was that Mr. Scherz was going to gather some information about high school honor roll, so...
Yep. And he did provide us with information regarding that. And so, I'm going to request that we move everything forward and accept the language regarding the honor roll. Are there any?
So, that change would not be in the handbook?
So, let's see if we get a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we asking for a...
Second.
Okay.
So...
All right. I apologize. Sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
Could you move the microphone a little closer so we can hear what's...
I don't have any room on my desk.
Maybe come in from the side.
Can we have our table back, please?
This is important, I want to make sure I hear.
Okay. So, there is a motion on the table in a second to discuss moving all of the handbook updates forward, except for the, taking out the honor roll language out of the Spooner High School handbook updates.
And you have a motion? And you have a motion?
In a second.
In a second, okay.
Yep, so discussion.
Discussion.
Yes.
What would be the reason for not moving that forward as it was asked for by our administration?
Mr., Mr. Melton, would you like to?
So in what we got for feedback, there's some, I did some additional research. And so the last time that that was posted, honor roll was posted in 2019. So what I think happened was, in trying to find all those records, if you remember, that was during the superintendent, Michelle Schwab, there was a lot of transition from that time. There was a certain point that, with honor roll, that I believe that was rejected. And what happened is in between, we had an interim superintendent. And we also had a lot of transition. And so what happened, I think, and then COVID happened, I think, in trying to find some of those records, I just recently found where we had posted from the Spooner Advocate in 2019. And so that's why that was motion made in a second.
And I think, and I think that there, with this is, is there's no debate whether, in this particular situation, they're asking whether we remove the honor roll language. I pulled that policy 8330. I read everything in that policy and nothing in that policy gives anything to do with students GPA. So with your question, Paul, about, you know, segregating those students or, you know, putting out their GPA, that isn't something that is clearly stated in that. And this isn't whether or not we should have honor roll, it's whether we should remove the honor roll language from the handbook. It's remove, it's, it's only used for graduation and that is true. So when you are a parent or a student and you're looking at your GPA, the only way that you can find that information out is in Skyward. So, and if you're not privy to that information or you're not logging in as that parent, you can't see if Mr. Johnson has a 3.5 GPA and Mrs. Olson has a 3.2 GPA. You can't see anyone else. And part of the, part of what we're looking at here is if you're doing well and you're a student that's excelling, and part of, part of the whole high school experience is to be recognized for your hard work. So removing it entirely gives us the opportunity to put that in, in another session to decide whether or not we should be doing an honor roll or not. This isn't the point where we should be worrying about that. So if we remove it altogether, we have the opportunity to be able to look at that in a different way and in a different time. So that's why we're asking to have that removed. That make sense? Could you hear me?
Yeah, I heard you. I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm thinking it through in my, what, so what you're saying is that to remove it, we have to go back and revise our policies?
No, because the policy doesn't have anything in there at all regarding student GPA.
Right, and we're not asking about, we agree we're not posting students GPA. What I'm asking for is, are we going to continue to post students' names in honor roll A, honor roll B, and those that don't make it?
You wouldn't know who doesn't make it, because you, I mean.
You would know because their name's not on the list.
If you know all the students, if you don't know all the students, you would not know that information.
Right, but if I'd lived next, and my, I'm, I'm going to say, I'm, it comes back to what we had a discussion about before. And it really has nothing to do with previous administrations or previous meetings or how you can't find minutes. It's really irrelevant. We're talking about, this was what was presented to us, and we are going to say, yeah, you're annoyed.
But it is not presented as should we or should we not have a posted honor roll?
It seems to me it was, the wording was.
To remove the honor roll language altogether out of the handbook.
Is in line with the current practice, that we're not posting honor roll currently. And so the handbook language should align.
But that isn't actually accurate.
Other than 2019.
Because it's happened since the information we just got. And I recently.
Right. 2019 was the last time that it was posted.
Right before I arrived here.
I'm sorry?
2019 was the last time that there was a posted honor roll. Please, Mr. Scherz.
So prior to that, my understanding was 1450, right?
We believe so.
So I was going by the handbook that was inaccurate. So that's why it was posted.
And, and, yeah, and I under, totally understand that.
Which I think is, it's good to have a handbook that is in line.
It is, but if you, if we take, if we take that, if we take that particular thing out right now, then we could A, amend the policy if that's something we want to do, or B, I mean, for the sake of being able to move the rest of this forward, because obviously this is a discussion that is not going to go away anytime soon. So, you know, we have, we have a lot of information that we need to gather. Number one is a board, number two is a district, you know, to make sure that we make the right decision for all involved. If we can remove this portion of this, move the rest of it forward, we can turn, we can have this honor roll discussion at a separate time.
Can't we still have the honor roll discussion even if that language is removed from the handbook?
Yes, yes, I believe so, but that's where, I think that's where it's being misconstrued.
My, my concern is you're, you're giving me an option right now that I was not prepared to make a decision because.
Okay.
In our community as a whole, we are not designed to be doing this. And you came to me with, basically until I heard a motion being made, I had no idea that this was going to be discussed.
I didn't know I was making a motion, I was, I was asking for us to move it, help.
I'm concerned about that.
Yep, so, yeah, just to be real clear, so no votes on this tonight. It's a motion and a second, what to roll forward for consideration.
I don't think we operate with motions and seconds, we operate with a consensus.
Okay.
Let's go back to that, because when you have a motion and a second, that sounds like it's final.
Okay.
And I'm not ready to make a final decision.
All right, so I'm going to rescind that what I thought was a motion.
Thank you.
May I real quick here?
Please.
So, yeah, so if you look at the agenda item, typically when the board's going to be asked to make a decision, that agenda item will start with the word consider. And it's.
It says discussion.
It's discussion tonight.
We're here to discuss, not vote.
Okay. I understand.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
I'm glad I heard, because I didn't know if I was hearing correctly. I heard a motion, it didn't sound like it should be right.
All right. Okay, so let's back up then, please, everyone. I'm going to rescind what I thought was a motion, but it was a discussion. Mr. Melton, are you willing to rescind your second?
Y- yes.
Okay, so we are discussing whether we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting. So, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Minus the honor roll language.
Minus the honor roll language. No, we cannot. All right, well, you know, maybe we ought to table this discussion until the.
I, I believe it should go the way it is and the discussion should take place at the, at the public meeting.
Okay.
So, so just leave it in there and go ahead.
Leave it in there and, okay. So leave it in there and consensus to move it to the regular board meeting. At that time, we will have a discussion whether or not we should keep that item in the.
And we might have two more people to vote on it at that time.
Okay.
So then in that, would we be able to put in the agenda the whole honor roll as an agenda item?
So, so what you're being asked to discuss tonight and consider at your regular meeting is the handbook language, okay? The practice of the high school honor roll would be a separate item for a, a different meeting, a different committee of the whole meeting.
My thought would be even to remove it tonight could be inappropriate because we have two people missing that aren't even here to say yes or no, or to even have, be part of the discussion.
Duly noted. Okay, so I'm back to, do we have consensus to move it forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
No.
Okay, for the record, Mr. Melton said no. The rest of us are a yes. All right, we're moving on to item K, discuss the SMS yearbook agreement.
In your documents, it's actually just, Life Touch provides our photos for us.
Yep.
So it's really not the yearbook. Carrie Bush presented Wallsworth in February, which was approved. So if you see in the background, it says for the 21, 22 school year, Life Touch has conducted the students' fall individual photos for several years. And that's what we're asking is that they continue to provide that option for families. One of the packages will be at a reduced rate at $20 less than what it was offered this year, which is great because it was pretty expensive this past year.
Okay.
So it's just our typical Life Touch photo. And then we use Life Touch to contract and use for our photos in our yearbook through Wallsworth.
Okay, okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Geisregan? Okay, great, thank you. Do we have consensus to move that forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, item L, discuss the dental insurance renewal.
So we've received our renewal notice from Delta Dental, our dental insurance carrier. And they, they've indicated a 6% increase for 2021, 22. First increase since 2018, 2019. So, um, single premiums per month would, the employee portion would be $6.04. Family premiums per month would be $15.58. Those prices adjusted to reflect the 6% increase.
Are there any questions regarding the dental renewal agreement? Okay, do we have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Great, thank you. And we're looking at item M, discuss the 4K paraprofessional physician, Mr. Hopkey.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
I'm coming to you to ask for continuation of the, the LTE 4K per, paraprofessional position, which is a halftime position. Just sort of some of the background. This past year, due to the COVID and our partnership with Head Start, we had to kind of switch gears and create a second classroom within these, the elementary building, which required an additional staff member for that coverage. Taking a look at May, as you might recall, we had a couple of days where we had to close operations due to the lack of qualified staff members to sub in that building, in the Head Start building. Taking a look at the 21, 22 school year, the administrator of the Head Start program is changing. It's going to be administered by the Community Development Institute, which is a temporary, it's a temporary grant program that's going to be operating that until an actual grantee is awarded for that grant. Because ICA lost that grant, which is unusual because they had it for 55 years. With that transition, we're anticipating that there's going to be some, some oddities as far as staffing and whatnot. By maintaining this person, it's going to, A, provide us an additional person that could fill in when staffing is a concern. Second, make sure that we have adequate coverage within our elementary building, just because I think things are getting tighter with coverage and our special ed needs, because I know our special ed paraprofessionals have helped with some of our recess duties and whatnot. And that's getting a little more tight, so to speak. So I think that provides us that opportunity to look at, or to get through this next year, look at where we sit with the, the grantor, or the, the grantee, I should say, for the Head Start program. And we also will have a new situation in the fact that all of the classrooms will be in the elementary building, so we can really assess what our needs are at that point in time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hopkey? Okay, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hopkey. All right, item N, discuss the WASB 2020, 2021 report. Okay, so everyone had, has had a chance to look over the information provided by WASB. That is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. They provide a great service to our district. And they gave an overview of the different things that they have done throughout the last year. They give us that report every year. And so I am looking to move the renewal forward to the regular board meeting for action at that time and receive and place the information on file. Do I have consensus?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Yes, okay. That's what your microphones for, Mr. Johnson, yes. All right. And item O, discuss the rollover of activity accounts. Dr. Aslan?
Yeah, so by policy, we look at these accounts annually. What I would say is in your document, you see a number of balances with minuses. And this is about the only time in accounting where a minus is a good thing, because it shows that that account is in good standing and that the district has money to deposit in it yet. So you'll see the majority of those, those accounts are in good standing. And the, the two that do not have minuses that are in red, that account will be in good standing, waiting for some, some grant money or some state money to come in. So, you know, the recommendation would be that move this forward to the board meeting for approval of activity account rollover.
The, the one is the largest one. Is that one, are our fingers crossed that we might get that or is that a guaranteed?
It, it, it's guaranteed, it just hasn't arrived yet, yes.
Thank you.
Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And item Q, talking about the achievement gap reduction, Mr. Hopkey?
All right, I'm bringing my rowdy crew with me to help deliver this. So just getting into this achievement gap reduction program, the first thing I really wanted to hit on is just to review what, what our focus was with this year. So the focus was fluency, and I know that was something that was identified at the end of the 1920 school year. And we really wanted to focus on that for improvement. Students had little to no instruction time on, on fluency during our COVID closure for the 1920 school year as well as that summer. And fluency is truly a fundamental skill for advanced learning for our students. So getting into this year, what were some of the challenges that we faced? The first one was that loss of an academic day, that in-person instruction on Wednesdays. You know, we, we had provided materials and, and opportunities for students to continue their learning on Wednesdays, but it wasn't that in-person new instruction. Also, we had that loss of instructional time for interventions and that in-person during our quarantines. And there were a couple of things that were of note here. So total lost days for quarantine for our students, 2,467 and a half days out of all of our students. Students that had two occurrences, longer than just one day, that was 89 students within our building. And I know that one of our fourth grade classrooms was quarantined twice within that April-May timeframe. And then students that had three or more occurrences were 36. The other thing that, or another thing to take a look at is just that lack of exposure of some of our prerequisite skills, simply because we left, we left that in-person instruction on May, or March 16th last year. State testing, we didn't get information from state testing last year because we didn't get to conduct it. We also didn't have our universal screener in the. We also didn't have our uh universal screener in the spring, which usually gives us data to start the following year. Fastbridge testing, that was a- a new universal screener that was introduced for grades two through four, so we just had some learning- learning curve to figure out how to administer it and how to utilize the data from it. And then uh testing uh through the quarantines of so- uh of the spring. So typically, what would happen is grades three and four, they would start their forward testing right after spring break, which is the end of March and into April. And then we'd have a little bit of a uh a break after that testing to get into our universal screener, which is our fastbridge. Well, during that timeframe, we had multiple uh quarantines within our building, which I think had an impact not only on uh completing the tests in- in a timely fashion with everyone else, but also that preparation time for teachers to prepare those students for testing. So what were some of the actions that we took? The one big one that wasn't noted here is we focused on grade level material when we started this year. We didn't s- we didn't look behind us in the rearview mirror on what we missed. We focused on- on moving forward. The other thing is taking a look at that fastbridge data and making sure that we uh use that data to determine what interventions were necessary for our students. Part of it, and I've got a list here with kindergarten, that word blending and- and numeral identification first grade. I mean, I won't go down there. I know you guys can read all that. But the big thing is that remedial instruction during wind time. It was truly focused on that larger group because we weren't doing the- the uh transitions between classrooms to have grouping within the grade levels. That was just something that we weren't uh that wasn't part of the plan with our COVID procedures, okay? And then the other thing that we took a look at uh in- going into second semester was not only the academic uh vocabulary instruction, but also the vocabulary development at the different grade levels. Okay? So. We'll get into just a uh a recap of where we finished off with the grade levels, and I'll start off with kindergarten.
You can see the data there. Um, we decided to focus more on phonemic awareness, more whole group, small group, centers, things like that to try to get us up. And we were really, really close, literally one student shy of making it. So we were really excited because that has definitely progressed through the years, the changes that we've made. And then math. Our math resource is fairly new, and then being shut down last year, we're still trying to get a handle on it all. We weren't as close on this one, however, taking a look at it, making some changes, it's a great resource, but it doesn't work on that numeral identification nearly as much as we would like it to. So we're moving towards centers on Friday to kind of do again that targeted instruction for kids who maybe need a little more of that. So it's kind of where we're at with those two.
So first grade reading, we focused on- on sight words. We were about fifty percent of our goal. If we look at that, though, we had a lot of kids that came to us with like five to ten sight words starting the year. By the end of the year, we- we had them at like fifty to sixty, so a good growth change. I mean, and hopefully, we can get them more like in the twenty range, so when we have that fifty-word growth, we'll be at the goal. Math, we, I mean, with their new curriculum, we're seeing good growth with that. I think with kindergarten finishing the year this next year in it, it will kind of solidify, and they'll have, it'll be our s- the second, their full year, and they'll have like the backgrounds as far as the warm-up activities and pieces like that that won't have to be re-taught as much.
Or maybe come up a little closer to the microphone. Thanks, Denise.
You bet, no problem. So um, we also did not get to that goal, but we saw a lot of really nice growth. Um, second grade reading, it goes from reading very simple books to chapter books. To get that fluency, you really need to be reading every day, reading for extended periods of time every day. And like we said, with the Wednesdays, um, not having the school, but we saw some really nice growth with the kids. In math, we too are liking the new resource. It does have a really nice fluency piece. And I'm seeing some really nice growth with my children with fluency. Um, again, with the COVID, I had a student doing great out for a whole month, you know? So that's definitely impacting. The other thing we've noticed in second grade is the um test that the fastbridge test, a lot of it is timed. So students who actually know the material may get things wrong because they didn't have enough time to finish, which that is a fluency piece, you know, knowing things quickly is part of fluency. But we have students who know the information, they just didn't have time to get it out. So we felt like we saw some nice growth, even though the numbers maybe don't show that.
Um, so third grade, kind of the same thing. We didn't quite meet our benchmark. We did notice with reading that um we targeted fluency, uh the repeated readings right away. So every week, our third grade students, all of them would read the same passage multiple times throughout the week. We had it, I think, originally three ti- or two times a week. Once our data didn't quite meet that in the winter, we increased that to every day um that they were reading those same passages during universal time. Um, but again, with those Wednesdays, um, that I think I felt that really, you know, set us back a little bit. But with math, the thing we noticed was um the benchmark actually changes in third grade. It starts with an addition and subtraction fluency and then shifts to the multiplication um benchmark by um the spring. So while we were building up that addition and subtraction fluency in those and still teaching multiplication, teaching those strategies by the end of uh May, um, again, with the same thing with the timed, um, kids know the facts, but um to do it in those one-minute timings, um, set us back a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, fourth grade data is a little bit different. We focused on the auto reading, and the oth- other grade levels were more A reading, so we were strictly just the auto reading. Um, obviously, um, our data's not where we want it to be. Um, I know a lot of um in uh May, we were hitting a lot of the quarantines, like April and May. We, you know, fourth grade got quarantined like crazy. Um, so that, you know, set back those classroom, you know, interventions and kind of the rhythm the kids were in. It's a hard transition to go home for, you know, ten days and then come back and try to get in the swing of things. Um, they're new to fastbridge, so that tech piece and the timed piece kind of played a part um in that. Math is looking better, um, but still, I think, just being new to fastbridge and the timed portion of it. Um, so e- but I mean, even though our data doesn't show it, um, our kids did show a lot of growth. And I mean, we couldn't have asked more from them. Um, the, you know, just with all the challenges this year, they all came in every day, worked hard, and, you know, that's- that's all we could ask from them. We're proud of them.
That was my, that's the one, that was the that was the one question I was going to ask each grade level is if you and- and I realize that sometimes the data, you know, doesn't look quite the way you want it to, but have you all in your, you know, in your year now that we've, you know, gone through COVID, have you seen growth in your children, in your classrooms significantly with the challenges that you've come across this year?
Yes, absolutely, some very nice growth. And as we're talking about the drawbacks to this FAST program, one very nice thing about it is that it does give you targeted instruction for your students. And so that's how we chose the areas to work on with our students. And so it tells you right on there what intervention should be used with this group, where can you find materials to use with this group, which was something that we were lacking before. So that is something that's a really nice benefit to this new um testing program.
And I agree, and I feel like fourth grade was kind of getting into it, but you just didn't get that momentum going. So that's our goal for next year, is to hone in more on those um screen interventions.
And do you think, do you think with the timing, you know, the time portion testing of- of those testing things that you can get the kids to understand that a little bit more so that? Okay. Grade, yes?
About different strategies to kind of trigger their brain to remember that it's timed, but then multiple classes end up in quarantine, and we were just, we needed to get it done, and so it just...
I- I think as we build it into our- our natural routine, that- that will improve. I- I will say that- that was one frustrating thing is there were so many students that were just on that verge of- of becoming uh, you know, at- at the benchmark. And so tha- that's a frustrating thing is it doesn't accurately portray where- where we truly are, so. I will say, getting into the action plans, the first one uh not listed is uh do not quarantine. That's- that's our first action plan. Then the second one, yes. Sorry, sorry. No, I was just kidding. Anyway. First things first is that consistent universal instruction, having dedicated time and dedicated focus. Uh, you know, that was uh some really good discussions today, being very deliberate on the instructional components, the times that we're going to have, and making sure that everyone sits or is conducting that. Because i- if- if it's not deliberately set, there's a chance that you lose that piece. And I want to make sure that everyone's getting the same instruction. Next one, consistent PLC-focused meetings. That was one thing that was supposed to start off this year, didn't happen. Okay, we've got the time dedicated in our schedule and- and making that happen. So that'll help improve our- our uh instruction as well as our student performance. Revisiting and revising our priority standards and essential outcomes based on the new state standards. There's going to be a- a larger focus on- on phonemics, phonemic awareness, our- our phonics, phonemic awareness, as well as vocabulary instruction. Making sure that we're incorporating that into uh what we're doing. Also, starting to take a look at what resources are out there to best meet uh the needs of our students based on what we want to instruct. Okay? And then last is consistent vocabulary instruction strategies. Making sure we're teaching the academic vocabulary as well as that vocabulary development.
Okay. Are there any questions for any one of the panel here? Mr. Johnson?
I want to say that I'm- I'm so happy. I- I love the numbers, and it was a tough year. If we- we-
And that's all you can ask for.
I- I-
Okay. Are there any, are there any other questions? Okay.
All right.
Thank you very, very much. You're going to um receive and place this information on file. All right. Moving on to item R is the thirty-sixty-ninety-day planning cycle. I said, everybody should have a chance to go over that. Um, are there any questions regarding the thirty-sixty-ninety-day planning cycle? All right, then we're going to receive and place that information on file. Um, item S, the financial update. Dr. Azlen?
So uh with our uh cycle being uh two months behind, we're looking at the month of April twenty-twenty-one. Uh, had a beginning balance of six million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and thirteen cents. Total uh income uh was uh, well, our- our total available uh was six million, five hundred, twelve thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-four cents. In terms of expenditures, uh, we had total expenditures of one million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and eighty cents. So uh balance on hand as of the end of April, five million, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and fourteen cents.
Are there any questions? Okay, we have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. And item T, approval of the vouchers. Are there any questions? Okay, if there aren't any questions, we'd like consensus to move to the regular board meeting as part of the consent agenda. Yes? Okay. All right, we're moving to item three, convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C, to consider the employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Did I have a motion to convene into closed session?
I'll make the motion. Back in.
Could I have a roll call vote, please, Caitlin?
Yes.
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 All right, we're convening back into open session?
Okay, the board uh reconvened into open session at seven seventeen PM, and the board took no action during closed session.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion. Back in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
All right.